Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have six members of the council present. Councilman Steve Buehler is excused tonight. We'll begin with an opening ceremony. Return to Councilmember Karen Lane.
Thank you. Would you please stand up if you could, in order to talk to him?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those counts here, okay. Our minutes of July 3rd. We need a motion on those minutes. Move to approve the minutes of July 3rd.
Say it.
Okay. Any discussion? Looks like they're okay the way they are. Then all in favor of the minutes of July 3rd approving them, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll suppose say no, it passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we do have a special awards that will be presented tonight. Our youth city council has taken on some very appropriate things to recognize a teacher from each of our high schools in West Valley City. And so what we'll do first of all is we'll turn some time for some comments from our youth city council mayor from Granger High School, Jelena Dragicic, or something along that line. And if you would introduce yourself so we get it accurately.
My name is Jelena Dragicic. But I usually don't say the last name, it's okay. The West Valley City Youth City Council has developed a program that is meant to recognize some of the outstanding teachers here in West Valley. Members of the youth city council developed a survey and interviewed students at each high school, then evaluated their responses and input from students, and finally made a selection of an inspirational teacher from each of the city's high schools. Catherine Gaskins from Granger High School, Haley Rice from Hunter High School, and Tanner Grossman from American Preparatory Academy were named as the inspirational teachers from their schools. Each is an example of a teacher that has dedicated their life to making an impact on their students. All are continuously putting extra hours to plan and aid students, and all three have shown that teaching is not only a profession that lays a foundation for all other professions and careers, but that good teachers are individuals who are there for life lessons, support, and encouragement along the way. This award reminds the citizens of West Valley City that we need to acknowledge and recognize outstanding teachers. The children of our society are our future, and these futures are shaped by mentors and teachers who impact these children along the way. We can honestly say that our future is on the shoulders of thousands of teachers. Teaching is no easy task, but hopefully this award from the youth city council will help these three feel that their efforts are worthwhile, acknowledged, and appreciated. Will the members of the West Valley City Youth City Council please stand and join me in recognizing these three teachers? I would also like to extend our thanks to OC Tanner Company for generously donating the crystal trophies presented to these award-winning West Valley City teachers tonight. The members of the youth city council will also like to thank the West Valley City Council members for providing us with this opportunity to recognize these outstanding teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. What we will do next is recognize each of them individually. We'll go as follows. Councilmember Tom Hune will do American Preparatory Academy. Tanner Grossman. And following that, Councilmember Pity Simado will do Hunter High School. Haley Rice McMullin. And then Councilmember Nordfeld will do Granger High School. Catherine Gaskins.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Grossman, if you are here, please stand up. It's great. Won't take long, but the good people will see ya. Judging from the comments made by students at the American Preparatory Academy, it is easy to understand why a math teacher, Mr. Tanner Grossman, is the choice for their inspirational teacher award. He makes math easier to understand, and his students say that he always shows up to class with a smile, even if he is not having the best day. Mr. Grossman turns a bad situation into something you can laugh about and enjoy. He was described by one of his students as my favorite teacher of all time. One of his students wrote that he could grow up to be like Mr. Grossman someday. A real clue into the character of Mr. Grossman was given by another one of his students who wrote that if I were my age, I would be the best offense. But right now, he is a crazy smart and an amazing, enjoyable person. Congratulations. Thank you. Please.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Rice, are you here? Can you stand up? You're recognized. Haley Rice McMullin, the educator chosen as the inspirational teacher from Hunter High School, is described as a teacher, a wife, and all over a one-of-a-kind person. According to her students, she isn't any normal teacher, but one who sees something special in every one of her students. She sees all of her students as one-of-a-kind kids with great minds and amazing potential. She taught us how we can achieve amazing things and progress toward whatever goals we choose. Ms. Rice is receiving this award in recognition of all the wonderful things she has provided for her students at Hunter High School. Unfortunately for the students at Hunter, Ms. Rice is moving on to another adventure in life and will no longer be teaching or coaching at Hunter. She will always be a part of the Hunter history and her students' hearts. Hunter students are proud to recognize her with this inspirational teacher award as she moves on to another phase of her life. Congratulations, Ms. Rice.
All right, Ms. Gaskins, will you please stand?
Thank you.
Catherine Gaskins is described as a teacher who truly enjoys investing in her students. She can be found at Granger late into the night preparing lessons, getting assignments ready, and talking with any student who might need extra help to understand a concept. During advanced placement seasons, she will start reviewing the last weeks of February and go into May. By the time the year is over, she has taught the complexities of psychology three or four times. Consequently, she has one of the highest passing AP test rates in the state. Mrs. Gaskins uses wonderful mnemonics and great visual aids and is always willing to answer questions and help her students in any way possible. All of the extra effort that she puts into her advanced placement psychology, introductory psychology, and sports psychology classes make her an exemplary teacher that her fellow educators admire. Most importantly, she is known to be a welcoming, helpful, and kind teacher that students adore and love to approach for any kind of academic and life advice. Congratulations, Ms. Gaskins. If we could have all of the youth city council and all the teachers come up for one more. Three teachers would stand in the next. Just a comment. We had council members in whose districts the high schools were lined up to do that. Councilman Buehler was unable to be here, so we asked an alumnus of Granger High School to do the Granger one. And of course, he was happy to do that. And so, in fact, I think there are several of us from Granger High School. At least three of us? Well, we can't all be great, so. Perrisville's nice, too. My parents lived in that neighborhood, so. So thank you all very much for coming for that. We appreciate your supportive teachers, and we appreciate you as teachers for the work that you do. And best wishes to you and your future endeavors. Now, you're welcome to stay the rest of the evening, but if you have pressing commitments, it's not unusual for groups to get up and leave. We have some exciting stuff to do, like temporary construction these months. Oh, no, we don't have any of those tonight doing. But we have a few things that we need to do. Let's see. However, next, we have our comment period. We have two people that signed up to address us tonight. Oh, yes. And let's see, we also have a public hearing later in the meeting on application Z-2-2018 for property 6,500 South 5,600 West. That will be a separate public comment period. So if you're here to speak on that, just pass. And we'll do that in a few minutes. But for the public comment, it can be on any issue. Frank Pedrosa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to tell the students to go register and vote and use the intelligent decision-making that our teachers have helped them learn. I'm back again to the council. It's the same problem that I had now through a year and a half. And if any one of you can show me the code that allows up to 12 adult people to live in a single-family residence, I'd love to see the ordinance. At last count, I think I've got seven male individuals and five female individuals, plus about an 18-month-old child that I really don't understand in the home across the street from where I live. Part of the reason I'm back tonight is because last night at around 1:30 in the morning, we were awakened again by an outburst from the home. I really don't know how on a non-owner occupied property, you cannot write some type of an ordinance that specifically states that the only people who can live in that home are the people as the signees on a lease. I can't understand why you can't limit subleasing said property. There's got to be something that can be done that modifies this particular situation. About nine months ago, I actually had to call 911 on one of the people that lived there. I really didn't want to get involved, but I didn't think I could let a woman who I thought was in distress just fall down on the sidewalk and be aware of it and not do anything about it. So I called 911. The almost 20-minute response time, I thought, was a little long. But when the first responders get out and the first man off the fire truck says, "Oh, hi, Mildred," or whatever the woman's name was, I thought that was rather interesting that they were on a first-name basis with this particular lady who was later described to me as a frequent flyer, drug abuse user person that was very familiar to the paramedic teams that showed up. I have a nephew who is involved at a management level with the fire department, and I started to tell him this particular story one day, and he read the address off to me before I finished my story, being aware of the same house from his position with West Valley Fire. I really don't know what else to do. And like I said, if it was owner-occupied, I see where you guys have a little bit more of a restrictive problem. But in a non-owner occupied situation, where I know that you have to have a license in West Valley, there's supposed to be inspections of various natures, it seems to me that something could be done. Meanwhile, when the Relief Society lady that is good friends with my other half shows up, and we were talking the other night, and I say, "Yeah, I think there's drugs going on in the place." I was in the United States Army during the late '60s. I'm familiar with how marijuana smells, guys. And then she says to me, she lives at the end of the street. Well, maybe that's part of the reason why we see cars come up, stop, get out of their cars, and then run down the street towards your place, which is on the way to the house in question, and then pretty soon somebody else comes back. When a car pulls into the neighborhood and stops for less than a minute, and somebody from the house runs out to that car, and then pretty soon they go back into the house, and then that car drives away, I don't think they're taking delivery of candy. I tried to talk to the police department about this. They don't seem overly interested. There was supposedly some type of an investigation that said there wasn't drugs in the place. But meanwhile, I'm still living across the street from 12 adult people who I don't understand the commune collective that they want to be there, living in that particular environment. We're getting down to the only thing that Elizabeth and I are left with is to move from the city. Anyway, that's one man's opinion. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Rasmussen.
Hello. Thank you for your time. Last Thursday, that's our garbage pickup. We received this on our garbage cans that they're trying to improve their recycling. We decided that we wanted to get rid of our recycling. And when we called them, they told us that even if we get rid of it, we're still being charged the same amount if we were to have it. And then I asked, "Well, what if we just swap it for a regular garbage can?" And they said that we'd get charged $9 more. I'm just curious if there's anything that you guys can do to get rid of that. Basically, if we don't receive the services, I don't want to pay for it. And I don't want to have to monitor all that gets put into my recycling bin. I have an autistic child that sometimes... We're teaching her. She's young. She actually came here and reset it... Or not him, actually, that's my son. But my daughter did come here for something a little while ago. I can't remember what that was now. But we can't monitor everything that she puts in the trash. Sometimes she puts food and stuff like that, and then we're getting these things telling us that you need to make sure that you do this. We're kind of taking it as a "or else." We don't want to have to deal with it or bother with it. It's kind of annoying, I think, for me to have to basically organize the trash for them so that they can go take it and make money off of it. And I'm not getting anything from her. I've talked to other people about this. A friend of ours that is from Canada, they actually get reimbursed at the end of the year. It's not much that they get, but they get reimbursed to help influence them and help them to have the desire to do their recycling. We're not getting anything out of it. Obviously, they are. They make money off of metals and things like that. That's a lot of money. I just don't want to have to deal with it. I'm hoping that maybe you guys can resituate it, do whatever you need to, that if someone doesn't want a garbage can, they're not paying for the recycling. Or give the option of you can have another garbage can when we take the recycling. I just don't think it's fair we decide that we don't want to deal with recycling or we should have to pay for it. And I think everyone would look at that the same way, as if someone came in and was performing services where you're doing the tile, tiling the front entryway, and you pay for it, but they don't do it. You'd probably be pretty upset about it. And that's how I kind of look at it, like that. So if we don't want it, we shouldn't have to pay for it. So thank you so much. I'm so sorry. I don't want to take up your time, but.
That's fine.
Appreciate it, but if you guys really look into it, because I don't want to have to deal with it. I don't want to pay an extra money for it. Mine's time.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Now, as you've seen, this is, it's not a debate. And by state law, we're prohibited from discussing policy unless it's on our agenda. And that's to protect the public so that we don't do work that the public doesn't know about. So what we will do is we will certainly take this one and have put it on our agenda for next week in our study meeting and have some discussion there on the recycling, garbage, the fees, the opt-out. There are some rules set up, and certainly we could have staff visit with you on some of the reasons for that. So we just don't discuss it too much so that anyone else who wants to know about it can also be made aware on our agenda. And the single-family homes, that one has been discussed repeatedly. We could share with you some information. We will probably not put that on our agenda next week because we've discussed it multiple times. But if you could maybe visit with one of our staff members, they could bring you up to speed very quickly on that as to why we can't have an ordinance. It's actually federal law and been tested in court. So with that, then, no more public comment of a general nature. Then we will come back to here. Mr. Powell, any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any additional comments you'd like to make?
It sounds like the first part of Mr. Pedrosa's comment has been dealt with previously and information provided. But he also spoke briefly about response time and procedure for reporting potential drug activity. If anyone else on the council is interested, I would like to see that on an agenda for discussion.
Heads were nodded, so that will be added next week. Okay? Next, we go to item eight on our agenda, public hearings. We'll deal with application Z-2-2018 filed by Amity Group. This is requesting a zone change from C-2, which is our general commercial code, to RM, multiple-unit dwellings residential on property located at 6,500 South 5,600 West. In conjunction with that, as a part of that discussion on the same issue, we'll consider ordinance 18-26 to amend our zoning map to show the change of zone there. And then second, resolution 18-118 to authorize the city to enter into a development agreement with Williamsburg Holdings Company for the 43.91 acres at that location. So just to get some information before you as we talk about this, to introduce it to you, this request is specifically for 8.9 acres. And of that 43.91 acres, they're proposing building an 89-unit senior apartment development, which are about 11.1 units per acre. Then there's also some property there that will be reserved for commercial use right along 5,600 West. And then they also propose a 180-bed assisted-living memory care facility at that location as well. And then building... Was it townhomes? Apartments? Mr. Powell?
The senior home piece of it?
No, no, the senior home apartments. But weren't there some others to the west of that?
Townhomes, yes.
There are townhomes, yeah. So that is the issue that is coming here for our approval, is to move forward with that proposal. With that introduction to the issue, then, we'll ask, we'll open the public hearing portion for any public input. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Not seen anyone? Then I'll close the public input portion, and we'll bring it back to the council. For any comments, further discussion?
Karen, I think that we need more senior housing in our city, and having it right next to this facility is a great place. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution. And, well, I guess the ordinance is first, 18-26.
Second. Property before us. Any further discussion from the council? I do have a few comments. I do have some concerns, as I expressed in study meeting, about the commercial aspect perhaps being insufficient. 5,600 West is a major corridor. And I also have some questions because we will be considering, once we change the zoning, a development agreement, maybe to get some feedback from staff on the quality of materials and townhomes and senior apartments, as well as the size, meaning square footage of those, and the parking issue, which, as we've discussed on many previous projects, just to make sure that they are at the same level. If they are not, why not? So that if this goes forward, are we getting the same quality and standards as we have with previous projects? So if it's okay, Mr. Pastrick, or I believe that maybe he's here, he would be the one to maybe give us some response to that. I didn't go through all the materials, so... And even when I do, I'm not sure what all of them means, so.
So to address what's in the development agreement, that where the materials are addressed. So in your packet, about two-thirds the way down, there's a document entitled Development Agreement, Williamsburg Holdings Company. So in that document, there are... Basically, that's the development agreement. And it's on the, who is the fifth page? I'm scrolling down here. Excuse me, this, the seventh page. Thank you. Where the development agreement standards begin. And so under that first page of the, what's referred to as Exhibit B, there's a section on materials. So for materials, it lists brick, fiber cement siding, and stucco as the exterior materials. This would be for the senior apartments. And then also included in the development agreement would be renderings that show the conceptual design of those buildings. Then as far as the size, it does have under that same section the square footage of 700 square feet, which these are. 700 square feet, which these are one-bedroom units. So that's what's proposed on the size. If you go further down, continuing on to the next page, page eight, there's a section on the townhomes. And for those, the minimum size proposed is 1,200 square feet and within with an average or an overall average of 1,400, meaning that there would need to be some that are larger than 1,200 in order to hit that overall average. Now, the, for the townhomes, there's not specific mention about materials. We do have our code in place now that addresses materials for townhomes, which would allow for materials like brick, stone, fiber, cement, and stucco for townhomes. But at this point, there was not materials proposed for the townhomes specifically.
Is that included in the development agreement, the townhomes?
There is, there is some language, again, on this page number eight.
All of this is included in the development agreement, correct?
That's right. And the thought process, so normally if we were, just to give some context here, it's only the property where the senior apartments are proposed where there's an actual change in zoning. The area for the townhomes is actually zoned already for townhomes. Just in the applicant's proposal, they had provided some commitments on some of those other areas that are not actually being rezoned. They're just offering that as part of their proposal. And I apologize, what were the other questions?
Specifically, the questions were how they compare to the previous projects that we have done. I understand that you've put in there those requirements in the document, but, and you did not address the interior of the units. A number of these townhomes recently have been upgraded significantly. The size seems to be perhaps smaller, I'm not sure. Parking was the other issue, because those are issues that the council had raised before to make sure that there was sufficient parking. So what would your statement be in comparing this project to previous projects as far as terms of quality of the standards of materials and features on the interior of these units? The size of the units, the number of parking spaces as well?
Sure. So on, as far as the interior, so our code actually does not address interior amenities, however, we have had many developers that have, as part of their proposal, included commitments on things like countertops or other interior finishes. That was not offered in the situation, and so there's no, there's no specific mention about interior amenities in this proposal. As far as the size of the units, for a one-bedroom, 700 square feet is pretty typical for that size of a unit, meaning a one-bedroom. On the townhomes, we have had townhomes that are larger. Probably the largest we've done in a development agreement for townhomes is 2,000 square feet, the council may recall. We had a project on Ludbrook Road recently that they were wanting to expand area for townhomes and they, in that particular agreement, they were asking for a zone change, they had committed to 2,000 square feet. So we have done larger in agreements before. And as far as parking, so in this project, there are, so each unit would have a single-car garage where it's a smaller unit, and then they have parking that's designated throughout the senior area. And the, so on the townhomes, each of those units would have a two-car garage. And I'm just going to go to fill up the concept here. So as you look at, if you were to look at the concept plan, in the senior apartment area, there are, you can have the single-car garages and they have pockets of other parking throughout. And we do have a mention in the agreement about providing parking, but it was meant to, it was more general, so, I'm sorry, I'll flip to that again, I'm toggling between these two documents here. So back on the, so here we go, this is towards the end of the senior apartment section of the development agreement, it says visitor parking should be provided, the exact amount and location of visitor parking should be determined during the conditional use review process. We didn't specify an exact number, but certainly if that's a concern of the council as far as providing an exact number, we can do that. Our experience has been that senior housing tends to have a lower parking demand than, than say, just a, you know, a more, just apartments that aren't age-restricted. So again, that's certainly something you could get more specific if that's a concern for the council.
Well, it sounds like most of it's not specific, and if it's not in there, then it's highly likely that it will not be at the same standard as we've done some of these previous projects. That's of concern to me, especially with the discussion the council's had about the need for parking. And I'm okay if there's some difference between townhomes and senior apartments, but you didn't give any numbers there, you just said there was a two-car garage. And that usually wasn't the question that was asked before, because most, all of the projects had two-car garages. And we turned some down because they didn't have sufficient additional parking in the project. So that's all I'm trying to determine, is if that, and from the sounds of it, it's not in the development agreement, so that means it's not going to happen.
So the, with the townhome section, that will be a planned unit development, which requires planning commission approval. And as part of that, we would be reviewing the amount of parking, and so that certainly can be and has been an issue that's addressed as part of the conditional use review. But again, if the council desires, we can get into the, or addressing more about the specifics on the parking for the townhomes. Again, in this, in this particular situation, we focused more on the senior housing portion of the, of the project, because that's the area that's being considered for the rezoning. But certainly we could address, get into more detail on the townhomes.
Well, once the development agreement is approved, pretty well, they can go ahead and proceed. Obviously, they have to show that they're meeting all the requirements. But generally speaking, most of these projects, they have exceeded those requirements, which was a very positive thing for a variety of reasons, some of which were market needs, that one-bedrooms were not in high as demand, as were some of the larger units. So I'm just trying to be consistent, but I'm getting, I guess, to some degree, an inconsistent message, saying, well, you don't have to worry about that, we'll take care of that later. And I'm not sure that that's been true, because I know we've approved some. And then when it went through, we wished we would have not approved it until we had those assurances, because we came up a little short. So I just share that. Certainly, you know, the council can act as they deem appropriate, but without those assurances in there, I'm quite concerned and I'm probably going to vote no, without having those assurances.
I know the issue's, may I ask you?
Certainly.
That the issue's properly before us, but I do have a question. And when these kinds of requests for zone change come up in my district, I'm customary, I just walk the neighborhoods, got, no one was able to come tonight, but did get a good feel, at least in my mind, feedback in terms of, the main concern being the terminology around high density versus what's here, medium density, at least what's proposed. So my question is, they're looking at 11.1 units per acre, where it's allowed at least medium density up to 12 units per acre, if I'm reading that right. But with the proposed zone change to RM, is 12 units per acre the maximum there, or is this proposal scaled back a little from what they could potentially build out if they wanted to go higher density?
So the RM zone is actually, the density is actually tied to the general plan, and so the maximum they could do is 12 to the acre.
Thank you.
If they get RM zoning.
Thanks. Mr. Patrick, I wasn't here last, last week, so maybe my question here right now, I'm going to ask you maybe a redundant question, but I want to make sure I cover that before I vote yes or no. Okay? You know that, we all know this, the senior people, sometimes other people take awareness of them, is that we have a, I'm talking about the security, is that have a gate, people, they can come in the community, just like all the senior housing we have here in our city.
So in the agreement right now, there's no commitment or requirement for fencing around the senior, senior development, so that's not part of the proposal.
At this corner, I mean, not a corner, but this area is very crowded sometimes, and I'm very concerned about it. I need to, I need to see some kind of security for these people. Actually, the senior people are concerned.
So I have the same concern as Mayor does about the parking. I don't think it's addressed well enough in the development agreement, and I would be comfortable with voting for either one of these tonight without further information.
I know we haven't put it to a vote at all, but procedurally, should this not be approved? Where does it go from there?
If the zone change is not approved?
Right.
At that point, then it's, at least for the senior apartment proposal, then that would not be able to move forward. However, the townhomes, the assisted living portion, the commercial are also, that could all move forward, it would be just the senior housing that would not be able to move forward.
That could be reworked potentially and brought back.
Right. However, there is a rule that, in our code, that says if a zone change is denied, then there's a restriction that the same proposal, the same zone change cannot be requested within a year of the denial. So they could, but it would have to wait a year if it's for the same zone.
However, it depends upon the motions. You understand that if, for example, if the motion to approve fails and we don't do anything further, that is not a denial, it's just no action taken. Or if we vote and say we want to continue this to a future meeting for more information. But if we vote, and we've done that, when we vote no, we, then it puts that kind of stop on it. But I think the other two motions, or the other action, either not taking a vote or taking a vote to continue it, doesn't cause that one-year clause to come into effect. We could consider it again in two weeks.
So my, my understanding on that is if, if something, and maybe legal can clarify, that if something fails for lack of a motion, then it's deemed denied, and so...
For the motion to continue?
Oh, for continuance, certainly, yeah. It's still, the application is still live, so to speak, at that point.
Okay. So that you're aware that if, you know, to keep it live, because we, a few times, didn't address that clearly. And so, so a motion to continue means we would not act on it tonight, but we would have, you know, an opportunity to address that again, that it would continue?
Should that motion be made, right, to continue? Yeah. I'll get the hang of this, I promise you, I'm learning.
So if, if, if we, if there's someone who would vote no to the motion as it stands now, would be willing to vote yes if it was continued and maybe some parking things were fixed?
Yeah, it seems like there's some provisions with development plan that I think members have issues with, that I certainly would be more comfortable voting no with a couple of them.
And I'm the same. I think the project is fairly decent project.
Certainly, yeah.
But there are some questions that, because of what we've raised in the past on parking and on some of the issues related to the units, that would, you know, perhaps use a little more work, kind of try and make it general, because we need to look at that, so.
I'm willing to withdraw my original motion and make the motion that we continue this to a future date when we can have more discussion about these issues.
Second. Okay. And I'll withdraw the second to the original motion, too. Now, that's interesting. If you, if the original motion is withdrawn, do you have to withdraw the second? Any, the second dies? Okay. Okay. Generally speaking, once the original maker of the motion, if he withdraws it, then the motion is dead, regardless of second or anything else. Generally. So unless council overrules this, we'll kind of operate on that, or until they give us further instructions. Okay. So then we have a motion to continue this issue. And I will make a statement, you know, we had our public comment period, and there's people who wanted to comment on this, I'm assuming maybe associated with the project or development. But our public comment period is over, but it's up to the council if you want to modify that and allow anyone to make comments.
I would rather wait and have discussion with staff about the parking and have it put into the development agreement.
Okay.
So that we don't have to worry about that tonight.
Okay.
Not get it right.
Okay. With that then, motion is properly proposed. Any further comments or discussion? To our city recorder for the motion, which is to, for a continuance on this issue.
Councilman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Petismonu?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for continuance is approved.
Okay, thank you. With that then, now we did that on, was that specifically on ordinance 18-26? So we now still have resolution 18-118.
Mayor, I would move for continuance of resolution 18-118.
Seconded. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Petismonu?
Aye.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Mayor Bigelow, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Continuing on our agenda then, we go to item nine, ordinance 18-28. This is to modify our city code to add engine braking to the list of noise prohibitions. You're aware of the discussions that we've had on this, and so we're excited to have this option in our arsenal. This is for engine braking, and we're also going to work with UDOT on this, hopefully on some state roads within our city as well. So this will put it into our code to move from there. So that's the introduction to the issue to the council.
Move for approval of ordinance 18-28.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Petismonu?
Aye.
Councilman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next on our agenda is resolution 18-119 authorizing the city to purchase this Tineco 600 sweeper from Intermountain Sweeper. Our public works department will use that. This is a, we use these sweepers around the city approximately eight times a year. We go through this whole city. We go through this whole city. We do have a current one, we'll use that as a trade-in to help offset the cost, reducing the $271,000 cost down to $173,800, which will be the net cost of the new sweeper. And they're high, they get to be fairly high maintenance, and so we have this standard of approximately every four years of replacing them. It certainly is a plus for our city to keep our streets clean and taken care of. That is the issue before us, to purchase this sweeper. With that introduction to the council. Move for approval of resolution 18-118. Second. Property before us, any further discussion? To our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Fatisamane?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That completes our agenda. Any last comments before we adjourn? Seeing no further comments, the final motion. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, it passes unanimously. We're adjourned.